Five o'clock. We welcome everybody and we're really excited to have Dr. Tiffany Richardson from the School Boards Association. I've heard her several times and it's never enough at school board conventions where we do have an opportunity to learn. Just for the public, I think I said this to all the board members, because we have several new board members. We have some that have not been on that long. We have some that have even been on a long time and we still have things to learn. So, we are forever learning. I'm not going to talk, I want to turn it to you. We're going to let you start it the way you want to. We did give you, just for the public, we gave a list, or she shared a list with me. And I sent that back to her as to things that I thought would be needed for us. But she is going to leave time at the end. If there's a question that wasn't covered or a subject, you certainly have the right to ask Dr. Richardson some questions toward the end. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Richardson.
First of all, thank you for inviting me. This is my first time at the district office and I live in this district. So, I just did not know where it was. So, I am so excited to be here and doing this workshop session with you. So, as I go through, as Chair Hammond said, I did send a list of topics and she just said, hey, talk about these. So, the scenarios that I came up with are those that I know are happening across the state, okay? So, it's not anything that I said is election in Richmond five. I want you to respond to the scenarios with questions that you may have or your own scenarios that you heard somebody else did and you just want to discuss it. So, just, you know, this is our Vegas space. So, feel free to, you know, share, discuss, ask questions, whatever it is that you feel like you want to do just so we can all make sure that we're on the same page on the topics that we cover. And if there's something that, as she said, that I do not cover, feel free to ask as we go along or at the end. And so, this is what I call boardmanship 101, to refresh your course because as Chair Hammond did say, it doesn't matter how long you have been on the board, how short you have been on the board, there's questions. As we know, things have changed. COVID hit us hard and a lot of things changed. And so, you know, as far as public comment, anything that's happening out there that we may have to, you know, disfinagle a little bit. So, as we go through, again, feel free to ask questions. And one of the basics that, you know, I'm going to go through, oh, see, I told you I was going to forget. Let's turn it on. And I do have this presentation in your folder, so feel free to follow along, but it is up on the screen as well. FOIA. And so, I do apologize if, you know, this is level one, but we kind of have to start at the beginning of FOIA just to get through some of the issues. And I do like to do scenarios because I feel like just saying FOIA says doesn't get us there. But when you see something in action, then it tells a different story. So, chairperson Digital Age is reviewing the documents from the recent expulsion hearing to prepare for the meeting in which a decision will be rendered. She realizes that she is missing some information. Chairperson Digital Age, is that better? Okay. Chairperson Digital Age emails the board asking for the information. Some board members reply and a discussion commences going over the details of the hearing. However, a decision is never discussed. Is this a meeting? Yes. Okay. So, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, especially now the fact that board members respond. And so, you know, anytime you have a quorum going back and forth, then it's a meeting. Even though a decision wasn't discussed, is it the business? Next scenario, to meet or not to meet. The board gathers for a retreat to assess and evaluate the board and how it functions. District business will not be discussed. Is this a meeting? Yes. So, and we'll talk about it. Because one of the things that FOIA says is the convening of a quorum of the constituent membership of a public body, whether corporal or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter in which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. And what you do have jurisdiction over is yourselves. So, even though you're meeting to not talk about technically the budget or students, personnel, as you're saying, how are we going to govern ourselves? That is the business of the board. So, yes, even though district business will not be discussed at that second, in that second scenario, it would be a meeting as well. So, remember, anytime you convene as a quorum to talk about business or something you have control over, then it is a meeting for FOIA purposes. A FOIA applies to both in-person and electronic gatherings. So, boards should be very careful, and this goes back to the first scenario, about chatting electronically using any medium, even if they are using personal devices. And then you want to be careful. That's email, that's text, that's social media, that's Skype. And we'll get into some social media scenarios later. But yeah, so if you send an email, and I think, I don't know if I had it in the first scenario or not, on your personal cellphone or, you know, using your personal email, it's still FOI-able because it's district business. So, all they will do is take your laptop, take your phone, take whatever device you're using, you know, sit down with you and go through your emails and pull out that district business and give your device back to you. So, it does not matter if it's a personal device. If it's a district issued devices and I think that y'all have them, it's just easier for them to collect it. But don't think because you use your personal that it's not FOI-able because it is. Any questions? Go ahead.
This may sound a little silly, but when you say that they'll take it and go through it, when you say "they," you mean the district? Or what body would take your personal devices?
It would be the district slash whoever the district has or attorney, law firm, investigator firm, whoever is responding to the FOIA questions, whether it's a litigation matter.
Right.
Whatever, whoever that body is, but it's not just some member of the.
And that would be if there was a quorum via text or via personal email. That is when they would come in and take that, right? Not just back and forth. Because I know our emails back and forth on our district devices are FOI-able, even if it's just, you know, me emailing Kathy or whatever. If somebody asks for all of my emails from the district, all of those are discoverable. But what about if?
If it's a personal device and it's district business, it's FOI-able.
Okay.
So, and I get this question all the time. I remember an incident where, you know, a board member said something, sent an email that was inappropriate to a district staff person. And then it ended up getting leaked. They literally just took his device and pulled out those emails and it became, you know, a matter of whatever the investigation was. So, yes, it can just be individual to individual.
On personal devices?
As well.
Okay.
Yeah. Of course, they will give you, they will give you back. They're not collecting your device. But yeah, they will. They will pull it. Great question. Anybody else? Keep them coming.
Tiffany, if, say, the chair is simply sending out information to everyone and they might sit back and say, that suits me, I can make it. That's not a meeting, is it? You know, or should I not even? I know some, I think Mr. White taught me, you know, just he'll might email me something and say, you don't have to answer this. But I just wonder, should I just go through Erin Strange and say, per Chair Hammond, everyone know about X date? I mean, I just don't want to.
So.
Or blind copy?
So, what I say, it's nothing wrong with an email going from one individual to everybody.
Okay.
Reply all is where you get in trouble. So, if you send an email to the board, everybody needs to respond to you individually. If Dr. Melton sends an email to everybody, you need to respond to her individually. Same with Ms. Strange, whomever. And then that will eliminate any.
Kind of meeting.
Possible discussion, right? So, if, say, you email the board, Chair Hammond, and then somebody responded to you with a question, then you respond to everybody with the answer to that question. I got this question, I just want everybody to know the answer. So, it's still an email going from one person to everybody with the information. So, never hit reply all. It is not your friend.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes.
What about in board meetings where individual members of the board are accepting emails during the meetings and using their telephones from other attorneys and people like that? You know, that seems to me that would be illegal because then you would have advice coming from an attorney that was not sitting in front of the board?
So, what I say is, all that is FOI-able. Because it's district business, it's FOI-able. So, technically, is it illegal? No, it's FOI-able. So, just, you know, be careful. Now, I have created a policy that addresses that and I'm going to share that later. So, you were stealing my thunder a little bit. But, and it kind of addresses that, basically saying, you know, when you're in the meeting, it's a meeting with you all and whomever is presenting to you and not the public as far as participation. And so, you know, when you're in a meeting, everybody should be hearing the public the same thing at the same time. So, if you're having side conversations with folks, that is not the public at the meeting, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So, it should not be done. And then you just leave yourself open to getting your side conversations open to the public. Because if somebody says, well, what was so, I think it's Vice Chair, right? Vice Chair Lovelace talking about, we want to know, and they FOIA whatever your text messages, whatever your email is, you have just opened yourself up to that.
But I mean, a board meeting is for the board. It's not for the people that are on the other side of that email telling board members what to say or advising them into, you know, for matters, whether it be a spouse or somebody else. That person is not sitting up here, so therefore, in my opinion, that shouldn't be allowed at all.
I agree with you. It's a meeting for the board. And so, what you say in your meeting is for the board members and other, the district staff, whoever is in here at that time. So, you should not be having side conversations during the public meeting. So, yes, I agree with you.
I mean, whether or not it's FOI-able is one point, but whether or not it's legal is the other point, right?
It's not illegal.
Why not?
It's just not good practice.
Well, I don't understand that because, I mean, if you can conduct a meeting with 10 board members who, you know, instead of seven, you know, why is that? I mean, that just doesn't seem to me that if we're not, if the rest of us are not availed of whatever those people are saying, then that does not appear to me that they should be able to do that. I mean, I couldn't have another member of the public sitting next to me during a board meeting whispering in my ear to tell me what to do. So, why would that be legal for somebody to do that on an electronic device?
There is nothing in a law book that says it can't be done.
So, I can have a person sitting next to me whispering in my ear?
No, no, no. I'm talking about, there's nothing in a law book that says that you can't technically pick up your phone and talk to somebody on the side. Now, yes, you can't have, your local laws do establish who sits on this board. But there is nothing in any law book that says you cannot have your phone and talk to people. If you're going to establish that practice, it needs to be a policy because there is nothing in a law that says you can't do it.
Okay.
Does executive session, does it differ for that at all?
So, yes, I'm sorry. Executive session is basically covered under FOIA that says you can limit, if that's what you're talking about, who goes in there? Or are you talking about the conversations that you have?
Yeah, with it, like you said, it's recommended that we not use electronic devices during meetings other than our district issued computers. Does it matter?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not mean to imply that it wasn't your laptops. Yeah, yeah.
I guess if, I'm just asking, is there a distinction between executive session and regular session as far as electronic devices?
I'm sorry. The public is asking for you to turn on your microphone.
Maybe get closer. How's that?
Is that better?
Cut it out. The little yellow green button.
Did you push the?
It's not green till you hit it.
Okay.
You can repeat my question.
I will.
Is it different between executive? Is there a difference between allowable use of personal devices, in your opinion, between executive session and the regular session? Or is that still a policy matter?
That's still a policy matter that you need to talk about and possibly established in your policy. The problem with executive session, as everybody knows, is it's a privilege and not a right? I mean, yes, it's a privilege. It's not a mandate that you have it. So, once you open up the privilege, I guess is the best way to say it, then you've lost it. So, if you're having conversations with the public about things that are being discussed in executive session, you have lost your privilege. There's no getting it back. And so, you know, once somebody says, well, she shared it with so-and-so, it's no longer privileged information. It's out there. So, there's no takesy-backsies. That's my favorite word. So, just be mindful of that when you're talking about executive session. That is your right to go into closed doors to talk about the subject matters that are allowable. So, do not, I guess you want to say, give away your privilege is the best way to state that. Great questions. I feel like we're ahead of the game. Go ahead.
I have a question, kind of, I guess kind of piggybacking off of that, but not really because it's not really talking about personal devices during the use of executive session. But if there are emails that identify or discuss something that goes on in the executive session and we know that those can be FOIA'd, is that the same thing? Does that waive the privilege of still discussing that?
So, as we move into the electronic age, you're going to, we're going to get away from paper. You know, you're going to receive things electronically. So, basically, if somebody says, oh, I want to know what emails were sent to you that talk about or that were used in executive session, the privilege applies to those emails.
Okay.
So, you know, nobody would get those emails. So, just as if you had a document that had somebody's name on it and that was privileged information, that applies to those emails. So, they wouldn't get those as well. Now, once you share, and I say you, I don't mean to imply anybody.
It's me.
Right. Once you, if you share that email outside of the board and those that you have elected to go into executive session who are also covered or required to maintain the privilege, then that's a different story. You know, again, you have released your privilege. I've given away your privilege, however you want to say it. But no, as far as what you're asking, are they covered by that privilege? Yes. If it's an electronic document, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay. So, the next one is agenda. What can we learn? The board has elected to have a retreat to evaluate how the board is functioning. The board wants to strengthen the relationships between board members and the superintendent. They elect to have a two-day retreat. The first day will be the board evaluation. The second day will be sessions on the budget, FOIA, ethics, et cetera, whatever the board determines. Can they have an executive session to get an update on all the pending legal matters as part of the training?
I would think no.
Yes. You can say, let's have an executive session to have legal training at your board retreat. Or I say training, update at your board retreat. There's nothing wrong with that. It just has to be noticed ahead of time.
I got you.
That that will be part of, you know, as we, we getting information on, you know, upcoming budget as we're getting information on maybe construction matters. So, you're saying this is a two-day, let's just dive in and have all the experts from the district office come in and give us all the information that we need. If your district council needs to come in and say, hey, this is going to be our quarterly update or our yearly update, let's just dive into all these legal pending matters. That's perfectly okay. Now, I included this line just to say, now, what if the day of the work session, you say, can we have, can we add executive session or something on the agenda? And basically, your policy is not correct. So, I just wanted to point that out. So, that's why it says model policy B E D B because the current policy that you have needs to be updated to comply with what FOIA says now. Because basically, you know, you will follow the order of business set by the agenda unless the order is altered by a majority vote of the members present. You can only amend your agenda at the meeting for a discussion item by two-thirds vote of the members present, if the matter, as I said, is a discussion item. If the matter is one in which final action will be taken without prior notice to the public, you can only amend it by two-thirds vote in a finding of an emergency or exigent circumstance. So, it's a two-step process. Basically, Supreme Court General Assembly has said you should not just be amending your agenda. So, they have made it a tougher standard in order to do that. So, for discussion item, it's a two-third vote. If it's an action item, you must first find that it's an emergency, majority vote, and then two-third vote to actually add it to the agenda. Now, mind you, level of emergency is what I like to call a crisis. Is a hurricane a comet? Okay? And my favorite thing to say is football is not an emergency. It's not. So, no, that will not get you there. It needs to really be district level or seriously level emergency. Is it 110 degrees outside and no air conditioner in the elementary school? You know, air conditioning in an elementary school. It's that level of emergency. So, be mindful, this policy definitely needs to be updated. Any questions there?
And you have a model, the model policy.
I do have a model policy that I can send you.
Because I'm sure policy is one of the big things we know things need updating or.
Right. So, I'm going to make that note. Is that one of the things you want me to send?
Yes, thank, yes.
Send model.
Thank you.
Next topic, more on the agenda. So, this is one of my favorite scenarios because I get this question all the time. No, this is not it, I'm sorry. Up for discussion. Board member, but I insist continues to ask for an item to be placed on the agenda. He makes a motion to add it to the agenda and the motion fails due to a lack of a second. Can board member insist to make another motion at the next meeting to add the item? Yes, I do get this question all the time. Who says no? Who says yes? At the next meeting. So, it got voted down today and then next week, and I say next week, like you have a board meeting every week. Next meeting, the board member says, hey, I want to add it again. Can the board member make that motion?
No.
So, the yeses do have it. At any later session, Robert's rule says any motion that is still applicable can be renewed. So, yes, it can be added. Now, technically, it's just a motion again. So, can the board continue to vote it down? Yes. But can that board member, does the board member have the right to make the motion?
Yes.
Oh, you still have to go through all that. It's just that, right, you still have to have the second, you still have to have the vote to add it. But can the board member bring it up? So, I get that question, it's like, you know, can the board member continue to make that request? Absolutely. Once it's voted down, correct. Correct. Correct.
Actually, if, you can, if it's seconded and if one of the person who originally voted for it changes their mind, right?
Right. So, it only, that depends on the outcome of the vote and who voted. But not, so rather that person was actually on the winning side. So, I'm saying that they were not.
Got you.
Based on that scenario, they were not on the winning side because they did not pass. So, they could not bring it up again. Yeah.
Got you.
Can, in a situation where a person makes a motion that doesn't get a second, can that person then ask to amend a later amendment submitted in the same line of voting? Can that person, if their, if they, if their motion fails?
Because it did not get a second.
Yeah. And.
Can they say, okay?
And then later in, say that an amended motion is made. Can that person then again make an, try to make an amendment to a motion that's put on the floor? In other words, to have a second bite at the apple?
Yes. So, I make, I make a motion and it does not get a second. So, it just goes away, fly by night. It did not exist, right? It literally did not exist. So, I mean, other than for the record. But then, I'm going to use Ms. Hines. Ms. Hines says, I make a motion to so-and-so and so. Oh, my goodness. How rude. I'm so sorry. I thought I turned it off. I must have turned it off. So, sorry about that. And so, you then make a motion and so I go, well, hey, you know, I can just tag on to your motion to get my matter heard. So, I make an amendment to her motion. My amendment still has to get a second, remember, and then still be voted on. So, technically, could I do that? Yes. Could it die for a second again? Yes. Does that make sense?
Let me tell that back so I can understand it. So, Mr. Lovelace makes a motion, it doesn't second.
Oh, turn on your mic.
Okay, sorry. I'm recapping it so I can try to work through what was just said. Okay, so, Mr. Lovelace makes a motion, it is not seconded. I make a motion similar, it is seconded. And he wants to make an amendment to amend my motion to include what he said and then it could potentially be seconded or not seconded.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Please don't do that. That's really confusing.
Well, that's.
That's just, you know, Robert's rules at its most complicated and at its best. But yes, so, and you know, let me, let me see if I can come up with a good example.
You can have a motion to reconsider too, right?
You can have a motion to reconsider, but that is what Ms. Huddle was talking about earlier. It's the prevailing side has to bring that motion.
Yeah, not the losing side. They can't do that.
Not the losing side. So, that's technically, and prevailing does not necessarily mean the for, you know, because the prevailing side could be against.
Yeah.
So, it is, it has to be the prevailing side. Yeah.
Does it have to be done at?
Does that have to be done at the same meeting?
It's the same meeting. If it's a later meeting, it's a motion to rescind and anybody can bring it up. So, it changes the game just a little bit. And then there's no limitations on the motion to rescind. Okay, now I'm getting complicated. Unless the action has already been done. So, if we vote tonight to buy computers and the computers are bought over the week, next week, the next meeting, there's no need to bring up a motion to rescind the computers. They've already been bought. So, it's no need to do something or significantly done. So, we, you know, make a motion to, and it passes to build a new building and then you've already expended all this money on land and property and contractors, then it's, you know, later to say, let's make a motion to rescind all willy-nilly. It's not a winning one unless, you know, for some significant reason. Yeah. So, that was just extra that I threw out there for no reason. I hope that that's good stuff, though. Any other questions? Y'all are really testing my knowledge tonight. Thank you. Making the good old brain cells work. Any other thing with that? So, I think I have one more regarding that scenario. I think it was adding something to the, or getting something placed on the agenda. I included this because this is your policy language about requesting items to be put on the agenda and to the chairman and the chairman, the board officers and superintendent discuss it and it has to be done no later than 2:00 PM on the Monday, one week prior to the Monday board meeting. So, basically, this is your policy and I just included the language.
I do have one other question. If you had a motion and it passed by two-thirds of the members to change the agenda, but it was an exigent situation, it was not an exigent situation, okay. Can the members of the board then vote that that item, since it cannot be voted on in the same meeting because it wasn't an emergency situation, can they then make a motion that it be placed on the agenda for the next meeting? Because that, you know.
It should be. If it doesn't rise to the level of emergency, that's exactly what needs to happen.
But I mean, there's, but you know, under our policy, the board chair sets the agenda with, you know, with the superintendent. So, would it be necessary for any situation like that where the board would then make sure that it voted on that it be placed on the agenda?
Okay, so, a majority of the board can decide anything.
Right, right. But it would take another meeting.
For that, for the vote to actually happen, yes. So, if a majority of the board says, we do want this put on the agenda.
Right.
It's put on the agenda.
Okay. So, that would be the proper way to do it. Okay, so, so that would be the proper way to do it in that session, you know, so that it didn't get confused.
Outside of a discussion, yes.
Okay.
If you wanna vote on it and it has not risen to the level of major, of a, uh, sorry, emergency, it needs to wait to a later meeting. It doesn't necessarily have to be the next board meeting, could be a special call meeting. So don't think that you're limitate, you're limited by time.
Okay, that's what.
Yeah, okay. Does that, if that makes sense? Everybody good? Yes.
On this one that you're talking about, this, I mean, we've, we've been here, this policy's been here all of my time in the board anyway. Um, is that?
Is that best practice, like, like as you look at policies all across our state, is that, is our policy pretty much typical where the chair and, and superintendent decide? Or ma, you know, I mean, I've always consulted with her, but I also consult with board. We, we set up a, um, way that Ms. Gardner is, is, as secretary, has received requests and then they're, they're brought to us.
Um, I think that's very specific to each board, but honestly, if I had to, to, hmm, just go off what I have seen, uh, across the state, I think most policies say chair and superintendent.
Okay.
So yours say chair, officers and superintendent, there's nothing wrong with that, if that's policy. But I think if you're just saying, what is the norm? I think most districts only have the chair and the superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay, and I included this, it's a model policy as well, uh, administrative rule, I'm sorry. And, and your, just for you to know that it's out there. And it basically talks about some of these things that we're covering tonight. The request thing, um, the addition of items to board members, I mean, such, to board agendas. And it also includes some other things, so I'll be happy to share this model as well. Um, so you can have it even if you, you don't, and use it in its entirety. You may elect to use sections of it. And add it to your different, uh, policies or rules.
Tiffany?
Yes.
I have a question about administrative rules.
Okay.
Do those have to be passed by the board?
I was just talking to somebody about that today. It depends, I know y'all hate my, my lawyerly answers, but it depends, so that is very district-specific. Here's what I say. What usually happens. It's only two policies, two, I'm sorry, two administrative rules that I say should go to the board no matter what. That is a procurement policy, because it just not, should not be, you know, utilized all willy-nilly. And, um, as well as, um, the graduation policy, because that's not something that you just don't want the board to be aware of. Okay? Um, anything other than that, it just depends. So what I have found is, in the best of districts, the board goes, oh, our relationship with our, with our administrative team is just wonderful, so we, we just gonna let them do the administrative rules. And then the next day, something happens and relationship not so good. And so then it say, oh, no, 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 you need to bring those administrative rules back. So it just depends, I, you know, on whatever the board and administrative team decides to, to do with those. There's absolutely nothing wrong with allowing the administrative team to, um, to, um, I guess you wanna say, uh, utilize the, the administrative rules and revise them and, and update them and, and propose them or whatnot. Um, because you will never have a standalone administrative rule. Okay, you can have a standalone policy, but you're just not gonna have a rule that does not fall under a policy that's been established by the board. So you have, will always have set the parameters and then the rules basically detail the specifics. That's basically what the rule does. So just like in this, this, um, rule that I'm showing you now, technically, this is the board rule, so you, you know, you would do this yourself. But, um, uh, you know, the, the specifics of requesting information, requesting something be added to the agenda, you wouldn't necessarily find that in the policy because it's so many different detailed sections. And so that is what, you know, keep in mind when you're looking at rules, is the specifics. So the, the best example that I will, um, give you is a, um, uh, a, a policy that says we're going to, to wear, our students will wear school uniforms, right? So the policy is gonna say, because of the safety of the school and the, the mental health of the students and, and, and to make sure that everybody is just uniform and there's no, you know, yada, 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 yada. The, the students in Lexington, Richland Five will wear school uniforms, okay? That's the policy, you're gonna make it sound great, of course. The rule will say, well, on Mondays, they will wear this, on Tuesdays, they will wear this, on Thursdays, Fridays, so forth. Because you may find that, you know, you have jeans and a tee-shirt on Friday where everybody's definition of jeans is not the same. And so that, you know, you may have to change and tweak from year to year. So it's the application of the policy that you want to put in the rule and, you know, it's okay to say, hey, let, you know, the administration team will work on that because you have already set the parameters in the policy.
So do you think, I think you said there, the, the B policies, the board policies, the board should pass.
Those, those are your policies.
Okay, so they should pass the administrative rules for those?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, you know, if, if somebody comes to you and says, what's in, in, in policy, in section C, which is administrative policies, you're go, you, you know, you may have to say, well, don't let me go look that up. But section B is where, you know, as new board members, as well-established board members, you need to, to dive in and make sure that you are, are familiar with and comfortable with those policies cause they basically are the board's governing section. So.
So, so administrative rule is not board policy, but what if those contradict each other?
It shouldn't.
Well, we've got one that does and, and I was just wondering what, so the administrative rule is just not, it doesn't, it's not in effect because of those two things?
No, it's one of those things that, not that it's not in effect, it's one of those things that will just cause you problems. So you need to pull it and revise it.
That's, yeah, well, I mean, and, well, we've got one that talks about, uh, use of attorneys and the, you know, the, the, uh, board policy for attorneys says that the board makes the decision about, you know, who to use as an attorney.
Okay.
The board, the administrative policy says that the board chair has powers in that regard.
Okay, so then you need to fix it. So it may be that the board will designate and needs to just, you know, de- determine where the, what, what is, is it supposed to be saying? Because normally what happens is, the board is not going to take a, necessarily a vote every time something happens. You know, what if an emergency happens tomorrow with a, and so you have designated the responsibility to the board chair to say, hey, we need to go ahead and bring an attorney to come in and give us advice. So it, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, members of the board have brought up the fact that, that, that in, and I've got a letter here from one member of the board that says, and all the boards he's ever been, you know, in, worked with, it was the superintendent that, it, you know, that brought in the attorney to be, you know, involved. But that's not what our policy says and then the administrative rule says the board chair and, you know, can do that. But, but what in effect has happened is that the board chair has become more powerful than the rest of the members of the board because they can do that. All right, and what, what we're trying to weigh out, it seems to me that, that there's two functions of the school board. One is judicial and the other one's legislative. Okay, and in nature, because for, for reasons, you know, that, that are necessary, the superintendent has to have power over all the, all the student issues and over the employee issues because if we're to main, r- remain fair and balanced in the judicial part of it, then we can't know about all those things until, so, so in that case, the superintendent should be the one that employs attorney. But on the other hand, there, there are situations where the, where the, where the board is in, you know, looking into things that it needs to look at and the superintendent should not have, you know, role in that. So, I mean, that policy, you know, is ambiguous at best and, and causing problems at worst, so, you know.
So it is something that you need to revise and I say best practice would be that you give the, if, if, if the superintendent in, in some policy or another does not have the authority to contact legal counsel, you probably need to add that because on a day-to-day basis, there are special ed issues, there are, um, any number of issues that an attorney may need to be contacted for the district purpose, uh, like you said, before he even gets to the board. So yes, you do want to designate that authority, uh, for district, uh, legal matters. And as far as the board, you do want to, to, to allow the, and, and whatever parameters you set as a board, that is up, totally up to you. But I do think that as, in, in some form or fashion, no matter what you, parameters you set around it, the board chair does, should have the, um, authority to do so in whatever circumstances as well. So you do need to take that policy and that rule and revise it so that it works and it meets the needs of the district. Everybody good? Okay. Uh, here's just the second page today and I will send it. All right, so FOIA, public participation. Do I have to turn over my, oh, sorry. Do I have to turn over my Apple device? At the last board meeting, board member Steve Jobs exchanged several email messages with community members who are his close friends. Okay, so this is the, the, the question that basically, uh, Vice Chair Lovelace was talking about. He used his personal cell and email account to discuss comments made during the public comment period by Concerned Citizen regarding favoritism shown towards certain community members when they request to use school facilities for church events. Concerned Citizen learned of the emails and submitted a Freedom of Information at request to the District for Board Member emails sent during the last board meeting. And as we discussed, those are subject to FOIA. So basically, yes, we've already talked about that. Go ahead.
So what if there was just a suspect that there might be something going on, but not, I don't know for sure that this happened, but I think it may have. Can we, can, is that still FOIable even if you don't have like grounds for it?
So the question is, is, if somebody FOIers your emails because you were, they, they believe you were talking about district business and there are no emails, there's nothing to turn over. So you only have to release.
Even if there were personal things that came in during that time? Just things that were sent?
Right, so, so I don't want you to think that everybody's just gonna have a wide-open access to your emails. Whoever is looking at it is going to say, this is district business, this is not, this is district business. And they're literally just going to pull the things that are district business. So if there's nothing to collect, you just, it's nothing, there's, there's no issue.
But they don't have to have cause to FOIA it? Just the, the fact that they are texting or emailing during the meeting is enough cause to FOIA something?
Right, so anybody can FOIA anything.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, literally, and I don't, not, you know, somebody could say, well, I wanna see the emails that, you know, Chair Hammond sent to Tiffany about this meeting tonight. You know what I'm saying? It's nothing to it, but, you know, other than some topics, but you know what I'm saying? It's still FOIable because it's district business. So, yes, to answer your question, if there is a suspicion and somebody says, I want to see those emails, is it FOIable? Yes. Um.
It, it's, that's a question that.
Yes.
Because it's, it's kind of interesting, cause, um, you know, if, if, if my kids text me or my wife texts me or I'm reading emails at work, that's not gonna get, that's not gonna show up, cause it's not district business.
It's not district business.
And, and it's interesting because I sat here, essentially before people said, got your, put your cellphone up. I come the next meeting and there's five cellphones, people are doing like this, you know, I mean, it's, it's a very political thing. Sometimes it is, can be.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes it is, you know, stuff that has nothing to do with this meeting. So the district, I'm assuming, if people wanna FOIA people's cellphones, you're still gonna be paying administrative fees for the district having to.
To do it.
And it's probably gonna be very expensive.
Yes.
To, to, to do whatever, sort of chasing whatever the things might be there. That, that's still a progress, I mean, cause the district spends a lot of money responding to FOIA's. A lot of times it's just FTEs doing busywork.
And you are correct, and you can still charge for those FOIA requests, just like whatever, under whatever, um, uh, pay scale or, um, charge that you set up on your district website. So yes, there is still cost associated with, um, with, with the FOIA request as you stated. Excuse me. And your personal things will not be turned over. So you are absolutely right about that. Um, if, if, if your, um, child is sending you an email, your wife is sending you an email, and even in our model policy, we state that. Like, you know, you have family matters that you do need to respond to and it's nothing wrong with that. It, it is the pure side conversations that we are talking about.
Tiffany, on that same subject, do any school boards across the state make a policy though about phones? You know, at having them out at a meeting?
Yeah, our model policy is exactly that. Talking about electronic communications during a board meeting.
Because if you needed, like, if you had an emergency with children or a husband or wife, you could have Erin Strange have that and you would come and get Ms. Hammond, you're needed on the phone and I'd leave the meeting. I mean, that, is that, is that being done by some school districts?
I, I, I couldn't answer that specific.
But they do have one about.
They do have the, yeah.
And I, I don't think we have one, am I correct?
You do not.
That's.
You do not, I, I, I will send that.
And that'll be up to the board, I mean, like you're saying.
If you want to, if you want to adopt it, absolutely. A- any policy, um, suggestions or recommendations to the board has to be approved by the board, so.
Sure.
Yes, um, and it's only if you feel like it, it's a need. Um, getting back to, if everybody, everybody good?
Good.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
If you have a policy where, where students and, and employees can't use, you know, telephones while they're supposed to be working or studying, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't go all the way down to the board level? I mean, that, the, the board is different from that?
So most of the time, those policies will specifically say students and teachers. So if you want to have a board policy that says that it needs to be in this section that specifically addresses the board.
So that has to be different from employees?
You, you are not employees.
Well, I, I know that.
So, yeah, no, that would not apply to board.
And gladly so, but I mean.
So, yeah, no.
Okay, so that, that can't, that, that, that line can't be bridged over to the other, okay?
Not at all.
All right, thank you.
Um, so get, the, the slide says any, and that, this is going back to the previous, um, scenario, any means by which a board member uses to discuss or act upon district business is subject to FOIA. Basically, we've said that already, so. And here is the sample policy that I was talking about for your review and I will send it in electronic version, so you have it. It's policy BEDL, board members and electronic communications. So it specifically talks about, um, having such devices, uh, using such devices during board meetings for communications. Uh, public participation, any questions about that policy? I'm going to send it and y'all can review it and discuss it, so. Before we move forward, okay?
Before we left it, yeah, before we, um, I think you and I have talked about this. This is, was new to me as chair, but we as a board discussed or were, were wondering what best practice is cause in the past, let's say if, um, this is from Dr. Melton's administration, I know Ms. Coggins said this is what she had done in the past with the other chair. If somebody had a FOIA request, they just let the chair know, okay? And then I let the people know that, whether it was me or another board member, that, that FOIA was being done. Just as courteous, I mean, I don't think it meant anything, nobody, nobody's FOIA was doing what they're supposed to do in the district. But do we need a policy that says, I do contact people and that she just contacts me? Or should Ms. Coggins call the person that's the board member that information was FOIA from? I mean, it, it, that was one of the things you and I talked about, that, that people had asked me to ask.
And so that is the, very specific again, and then you, you need to discuss that and determine, you know, what practice that you wanna employ. So technically, the only person that has to know is the person that's, information is being FOIA'd. But if it's a, okay, let's go through the board chair, I, I can see the, the, the staff person going through the board chair to disseminate that information just because that is the point of contact for the board. So I, again, it's one of those things where let's talk about how you want to do it and then let, we can go from there. Because it just, that is very specific to the district and what. Because it just, that is very specific to the district and what, what best fits your needs.
Okay, so there's not, there's not...
There is, there is no rule as to how that's done. Not at all. Everybody good? All right. Can you hear me now? During the board's special call meeting, Citizen Free Speech wants to discuss the horrible traffic congestion in front of the high school. Citizen Free Speech realizes that public participation is not included on the agenda and angrily leaves the board meeting. He later files a complaint with the district. Should public participation have been included on the agenda? All my nose say. So it does not have to be, it does not have to be. Um, board meetings are not public forum meetings, but are meetings held in public. So public participation is not required by state law, it is a means to gain community input, and we highly recommend you have it, but it is never required. Go ahead.
At one time, in early years that I was on the board, they have had public participation twice, you know, at the beginning and then at the end.
Yeah, every district does it differently. Even the time limits set by, set for individuals to speak, the amount of time allotted to public participation, so there is no right or wrong answer to that. Again, you know, it's one of those things where it's very board-specific, even how you sign up. You know, most, I'd say, will do it the night of the meeting, some will do it the day before, couple days before. So again, it's just very district-specific as to how you set up public participation, and there is no right or wrong answer to, to, to that as well. It's just something that we, we do highly recommend, because it does, you know, build a bridge between the, the community and the board. Now, I know we're in the middle of pandemics, I know you may have, you know, tweaked how you do it, so absolutely continue to, to, to do it safely, and, and however, whatever means that is. But, and if you have any questions about how it's being done, and, and need to, to run that by me, I'll, I'll be happy to discuss that with you. All right, executive session, fun stuff, right? Tired of the games. So this is one of my favorite scenarios. Uh, board member Carolina Gamecocks did not like what board member Clemson Tigers said at the last board meeting. Carolina feels like Clemson's comments are always directed at her, and that Clemson thinks his number of board awards gives him the right to talk down to her. Board member Carolina discusses her concerns with the board chair, who thinks they need to come together on one accord. The board chair says they will discuss this at the next board meeting during executive session. Is this an executive session topic? It is not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It is not. So, and I, you know, I get this all the time, we'll, we'll just, we'll just hash it out in executive session, that is not an executive session topic. So what I suggest is, you know, the, the two board members who, Carolina and Clemson, have this issue, let's, you know, let's go to lunch, talk about it, and, and work that out. If, you know, you feel like you need a neutral party, take Chair Hammond, or Dr. Melton, or whomever you feel like needs to accompany, and let's work this out. But it is not any, any official, uh, executive session allowance. So, that, that's the best way to bridge those waters, let's, let's work this out together. Everybody good?
Good.
FOIA basically has set forth the reasons for going into executive sessions. Personnel, student matters, contract negotiations, legal matters, related to a pending threat or potential claim, settlement of a claim, or the position of the district in other adversary situations, security and safety measures, investigative proceedings related to criminal conduct. Now, the, the two things that will get you in trouble the most is taking a lawyer with you in executive session and saying, we're talking about legal matters. So that's not, just because you take a lawyer in there with you does not mean that, you know, you're talking about legal matters. So what is the legal matter? So make sure that you, you know, take that, and it's not just saying, legal matter, well, what is it? Related to a pending threat or potential claim? It can even be a legal matter tied to a contract, or a legal matter tied to, um, a student hearing, or whatever it is. But, so it's not a problem, but just make sure that you're being specific enough, and not just, there, there have literally been court cases where the court is saying that that's just not specific enough, and won't, won't get you there. The other thing is just saying contract negotiations. Contract negotiations for what? You know, you have to be more specific than just the general heading, these are what will get you in the door, but what specifically are you talking about? You don't have to say, I'm talking about contract negotiations for property, you know, 111 Research Drive. Of course, you don't want to give away your negotiating hand, but you do want to say contract negotiations related to, uh, the purchase of a property. That's gentle enough, it's specific enough, to get every, to let everybody know exactly what you're talking about.
So, talking about a contract that you're not negotiating, an existing contract, and if there's no pending threat or potential claim associated with that contract, can you do that in executive session?
So yes, I would say pending contract, that is perfectly fine.
Even if it's an existing contract, not a pending contract?
Because there, there could be some term in that contract that you need to talk about, that you don't want the public to know. So you can say discussions regarding a pending contract, or, I'm sorry, continuing contract, continuing contract.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, that's perfectly fine. That's specific enough to, yes, get you in the door. And then that, that may lead to, you know, adversary situation, depending on what it is. So yes, I, I will give you that. Safety and security measures, you know, where you're going to put the, the, what do you call it? The safety glass, and where your security guards will be stationed. Any of that will get you in the door. You just never want the public to know, you know, what you're doing to protect the kiddos.
So on the last line item about the investigative proceedings, if that doesn't, if, you know, if there's no dream of criminal conduct, which is, you know, hardly ever, but that doesn't, that doesn't warrant, you'd have to do that in public?
If it's, if it hasn't met the level of criminal conduct?
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, you could, you could have things that are, you know, that violate policy that aren't criminal, I mean, you know...
So, if, if it's related to a student or a teacher?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going there, I'm just talking about, you know, something else other than related to a student or a teacher.
Okay, so then, it, it depends on, yeah, but is it still a legal matter that's an adversarial situation? So you, you still have other ways to get it in there, even if it's not criminal?
Okay, but I mean, if, if, if one or two of the members of the board are asking for something to be investigated, and you haven't, you know, you don't have any qual, you know, idea that anything's criminal, you know, but you want it investigated, is that the proper place to do it?
Oh, no, I wouldn't do that outside of that. I would do it under one of the other categories, depending on what it is. So, yeah, potential claim, settlement of a claim, in an adversary situation, you know, so you, especially if it's something you need to investigate, then more than likely it's going to, it's leading down one of those paths.
So, so item number three would suffice to...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that, that clears that up, because I was, I was just wondering if it, you know, if it had to be very specific to be criminal conduct, you know, which, nobody knows that, you know? I mean, nobody, you know, would know for sure before they investigated, you know?
So, um, say you got, no, so it's, it's probably more than you, than you realize, but you just probably put it, usually put it under personnel? So if, you know, and I'm not, not saying anything, but if, you know, you, you got wind that an employee had been arrested for something or something like that, you probably don't put it under that last category, but it would fall under that, that last, that last category. So it's that type of thing. Technically, it fits in any one of those, the top, the, the third, or the last category.
Right.
So you do have some, you just probably have never used that category, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Everybody good?
Yeah.
And then you also have your board code of ethics, and this is another policy that you may want to revise, you had some really great, a good information in here. But we, we probably want to look at this a little bit, just so that, you know, we have, we now have a, we split this policy into the code of conduct, and then the code of ethics. And so the code of conduct is more of those best practices behavior that the, the state board members came up with years ago that says, you know, board member will do this and do that. And then you also have what I call the, the ethics rules that say, you know, board member cannot do this based off of the ethical rules. So you may want to look at these, this policy a little bit. I still included it because it's still good information, you're, you're still good to go. I just would look at your policies if you have not in a while.
This policy that you have right up here, is this the model policy?
This is yours, this is the language in yours.
This is ours.
BCA. Or maybe it's the next one, did I mess up the code?
It's not, this is not our, this is not our ethic, I'm looking, I'm looking at our...
Look at the one after that.
Code of Ethics, and then there's Conflicts of Interest. No. No, that, it's okay, but this is, this is not our...
It should be the one that, we'll, I'll check, I'll check, I'll send you what, what...
I just want to make sure I know like what's wrong.
If it's the wrong one, I'll double check.
Okay.
But, um, it, it may, it may have been a wee hours of this morning, so...
Totally understand.
But, um, yes, this, this language should be in one of them. And I'll, I'll double check before I leave here on that one, double check this. Okay. Um, social media. Everybody good to move on?
Good.
Yes.
Uh, here we go, the truth of the matter. We are parents of Palmetto School District Advocacy Group is not happy with the plan for reopening schools. They begin a public Facebook group and are constantly posting information about the district. Board members see the posts and begin providing factual information about the decisions that were made in an attempt to clear up any misunderstandings. What are the issues here? Okay, so the first one, I'm gonna help us out with this, this little song, because I know you want to help, y'all want me to sing? Let it go. Just let it go, this is not your problem, right? Basically, you know, people are going to talk, people are going to, to say things. If you want to clear up anything that, you know, is said about you, what you know is going on in the district, then you do it here, in this room, and say, you know, we just, we just want the public to know this, this, that, that, whatever. But, yeah, no, mm-mm. To, to say, let's just, let's join this Facebook group, let's, let's comment, no, no, no. But let it go. That, that is, that is not the board's role to go out and, you know, try to clear up any misunderstanding. Right? Everybody good with that?
Good.
Um, and what I will say is, you just want, also want to be mindful, we talked about this earlier, remember, if you all start commenting in this group, and, you know, you, you find yourself in a quorum, then what are you, in discussing public business?
FOIA, yep.
You, you may have some, some other issues. So just, just be mindful of that as well. Go ahead.
Well, we just, I guess recently, we, I replied to an email that I received, and it ended up on Facebook. Is that, that wasn't me directly, I didn't ask them to put it on Facebook, and I didn't...
Oh, that's not happening.
But that's okay, that's not, that would, even if they, even if this person got a reply from five members and put all five of our discussions, as long as we're not posting it, it's not...
No, not a problem.
Okay. Just side note, I just looked at the policy, what I was talking about, there's a small, what you put was a small part of the entire policy, so you were right.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was looking at the top of it.
It wasn't a wee hour of the morning mistake, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that, since you said we should look at it, that I had it right.
Yeah, no, okay. So it's in there, it's just not the, the, the whole thing, yes, ma'am. So, yeah, be mindful of the, the social media discussions, not even just, you know, on somebody else's page, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Everybody good with that? Let it go, let it go. The next one is board business. Board member Lex Rich News creates a personal Facebook page for promoting his work on the board. The page does not have any district logos, it is not an official page of the district, it does not, it does, I'm sorry, include the activities of the district, the board, and events and activities attended by Mr. News. The page is open for anyone to comment and post. One irate parent begins complaining about the, the board and the district in an ugly manner. Mr. News deletes the comment and blocks the parent from his personal page. The parent files a lawsuit against Mr. News and the board alleging his First Amendment rights have been violated. What are the issues here? He shouldn't have deleted it, though. That, that's, because then it becomes, this is what the court said, and so I, I did this specifically, and Davidson V. Randall, basically, the, this was a city council person specifically, and she said, it's my personal page. And so the district, I'm sorry, the court said, is it used to inform the public about official activities? Yes. Does it solicit input from the public? Yes. It's not your person, you can't just say, it's my personal page. Is, and then the other argument was, is it, is not a public forum? Is it interactive, and does it encourage the exchange of views? Yes. Is an individual's viewpoint being silenced? Yes. So then, it's just not, not a public forum. So be, be careful about, and I'm not saying don't have personal pages, I'm just saying, be mindful that, you know, as you're, you're posting things about the, the district, and absolutely, nothing wrong with that, just, just be mindful that if somebody comments and you don't like the comment, it's not a good idea to say, fuck you. Unless, you know, they're, they're being derogatory in some form or fashion that you have said, that's not allowed on my page.
What if your page is not open to the public, and it's open to, like, friends and family, or, you know, like where your page is, where people...
Just your, your small community.
Unless you're a friend and a family, you can't see the page.
Page anyway.
Right.
So, so that is more of, it's a personal thing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, and I, I'm like you, only friends and family on, on my page. So, yes, and I'm not elected official, so I don't know why I said it. But, yes, I, I would say that, that you are more likely to win the argument of, this, this is not a public forum. This is just for my family and my friends. Yeah. Anybody else? Good stuff, good stuff. All right, complaints. Surprise, surprise. Board member Wonder Woman has been told by the teachers in her neighborhood middle school that the principal is not following the COVID-19 plan, and the district, that the district has established. Wonder Woman tells the teachers she will take care of their concerns. At the board meeting, Wonder Woman informs the superintendent that she is aware of the lack of safeguards at the middle school, and asks, what is he going to do about it? What are the issues here?
Outside of their realm, I, I, I wouldn't think a board member needs to take that on, you'd go to Dr. Melton.
Right, and I, so here's the thing that, that bothered me about this one is, you know, when, you're gonna get complaints, right? As, when people see you in the street, they go, I voted for you, so I need to tell you what my issue is, right? Because that's what I would do. So, um, it, and then when it happens, then, you know, my, my catchphrase, and for those who have not heard me say it, is, if you tell me now, then I can't listen to it, you know, the more you tell me now, the more I can't listen to it later.
Right.
Because, especially if it's an, outside of COVID-19, if it's a, you know, employee grievance, or, you know, a student matter, and you say, listen, if, if I'm going to be at the table when it gets before the board, then I can't act on it, I can't do anything now, because I can't wear both hats, I can't be investigator, or, you know, advocate for you, and then be, put on a judicial hat as well. So I will have to recuse myself later, the more information you tell me, you tell me now. So then, you, you know, you steer them to the proper channels.
Right.
I think what, what, what I, why I included this is because it's the surprise, surprise at the board meeting, right? And, 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 and so when you got this complaint, instead of picking up the phone, and I say you, when the board member got this complaint, instead of picking up the phone, at that point and saying, hey, Dr. Melton, I got this complaint, you know, I'm, I'm passing it on to you, it was a, let's wait till we get at the board meeting and go, surprise, surprise, Dr. Melton, I have this complaint that, you know, no, I never told you about. And so, that's just not a good feeling, right? You know, when your boss comes to you and say, hey, why did you do this in front of the, in, in front of the, the other employees? It's just not a good feeling. And so, you know, you just don't want to, you want to work on that relationship as well with the superintendent, as well... as well as with other board members. So, it's, it's the not get, gotcha at the board meeting that you want to, to, to refrain from, um, or you want to practice not doing. Um, and also the individual, um, the council, as much as, as, as possible, you want to refrain from doing that. Um, here in your BCA, Board Member Code of Ethics, and this is another little section that I took out of it, referring all complaints to the superintendent, discussing them only at a regular meeting if a failure to arrive at administrative solution occurs. And then you really need to, to look at that language and determine, you know, what does that mean exactly? So, that's one clause that you really want to, um, uh, look at again to make sure that that is, it's saying exactly what you want it to say. Um, because I see a lot of holes in that particular, um, clause.
Is that our existing?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Board Policy BDD, the next one, talks about your board superintendent relationships, and it, it's, it's what I said a little bit earlier, different way. The relationship that exists between board and superintendent is a intrinsic part of the educational process within a community, and knowledge of what each can reasonably expect of the other can help substantially in promoting sound work and relationships. So, it's a, again, let's not, let's not do the gotcha, gotcha at the board meeting. Uh, everybody good?
Everybody's good.
All right. Request for information. Board Member Needs to Know has asked the superintendent to provide all the information on any field trips taken in the district for the last five years. This information is not readily available and will take time for staff to compile. Board Member to Know insists on having the information. What are the, the issues here?
The timing, the amount of time it would be.
Mm-hmm. This, this is the last five years.
Yeah.
That's a lot of information. So, it's not one of those things that's probably rarely available and one report and easy to access. And so, it takes time, but even more so than that, so, if Ms. Hines wants to know about field trips, Mr. Hogan wants to know about football injuries, I don't know why I said that, it wasn't a sports thing, it sounds great, it sounds great, it sounded great when I went with it. Um, Secretary Gardner wants to know about, um, construction, and so forth, so forth. Where are we going with this, all this information? You know? And so, I think when you, you're making requests like this, just, first of all, understand the, 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 the time requirement behind it, and then, you know, try to all get on the same page as, what are we trying to achieve with the information? What is the board really trying to get behind? Is it, you know, how, how is our money being expended? Is it, you know, maybe all the, the legal fees that have been, that have been expended? What are we trying to accomplish with the information? What are we really trying to know? Because there's some underlying issue that we're all trying to get to, but what is that? And so, I think it's, it's, it's one of those things where, where are we going with this?
Yeah. That's good. So, are you suggestion, suggesting that if we have something, you know, if I want to ask about football injuries, that, for the last five years, that when I make that request, that I say, "I want to ask about football injuries because an unidentified school district just lost a lawsuit in another county, and I want to make sure that we're, our policies are, or, you know, that, that I give a reason for wanting the information?"
Well, I, I think-
In the request, or that I don't make, or that I wait to make that request until we're in front of a full board, or?
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying that. I, it, it, you know, i- if you say that, and then the board agrees that they all want it, that's a whole different story. So, there's nothing wrong with that. I think it's more or less, yes, understanding the why. And so, everybody is not, not on their own-
Trying to find information.
Train, trying to get information, when everybody may be getting at the same thing. And so, just to, to get that idea of, yes, I do want this information because of what I know from this other school district, that may be of interest to everybody in this room, because, you know, if it happened down the street, it may hit here next.
Right.
So-
I didn't mean anything by that, if you watch the news.
So, I think, I, I, that's all I'm saying, is what are we trying to get to? It's usually something that somebody or everybody wants to know, and nobody's really saying. So, I think that's just, you know, let's, let's, this, um, you know, communicate, um, uh, what, what basically is driving the request to the rest of the board, and, and especially to the administration, because that just may help with the, okay, so what, you know, you're asking for this, but what you really want is this, so if I give you this, will that solve everybody's request? Type thing. Um, and then we may not have to do individual searches. We can probably accomplish this by saying, "Our budget was spent on this because of yada, 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 yada," and then everybody's happy.
That makes sense. Um, do you have a suggestion? Would that be something that is acceptable to talk about? You know, just, I would talk individually to a board member about, let's say they've asked for that, and I might go and say, "What is your purpose? What's your goal? What's your end game with that?" Or should that be discussed where everybody hears the same answer of the person asking it? Would that be public? Would that be, I mean, I see your point, but I want to see where we implement.
How should it be implemented?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, let's see. Um, so, it ju, it ju, it depends. Um, whatever I, I would say be consistent, right? So, if, if the board says, "Well, let's put it all out on the table," then just do that for every request and not just certain requests. If it's a, you know, let's, let's handle them individually and get an idea of what everybody wants. I don't really have a, let me think about that one. Let me think about that one. Um, go ahead.
Is, is this more of a, what you, I mean, there are gray areas, right? It's one thing to ask, "I'd like every football injury for the last five years." It's another thing to say, "I'd like all of the football injuries for this particular high school for last year." You know, I'm saying there, there are swaths here.
Right.
So, is this more of a should have, because the other thing to juxtapose against this is I believe the Attorney General has said that a board member has a right to any board rec, to any record of the school district. So, are we really talking just the, the, don't be mean, kind of? You know, don't be overwhelming.
It, it, that, because, you know, again, it's one of those things where if everybody on the board has an individual request, when is the administration getting time to do the job? You, and, and so, I, that's all I'm saying is be mindful of. You're absolutely right, the, the Attorney General, I think in a court opined on it as well, that said, you know, you, you, you have the right as a public official for the school district to, to make a request and, and get some answers. Um, but I think the best practice is to just be mindful of the time requirement, and then if it is a five-year injury, it's not going to happen, and so, you know, your request may turn into a FOIA request type length, you know, just to give the staff time to turn over the information that you want, and just being okay, understanding that it may take some time. But also, you know, what, why are we requesting this information? Just to get, everybody get on the same page. So, yeah, great question. Good statement, or statement, however, I can't remember which. Um, everybody good? And then we, we sort of put that in the, that policy that I'm going to send y'all as well. Adopting Policies. Know Your Role. I had a really good question, this from, um, a board member, and I thought it was interesting. So, it came with a scenario. Board Member Do the Right Thing has questions about the policy manual revision process. And they are, this particular district is going, undergoing a full policy revision. Um, and she has listened over the years to all the training about board roles and responsibilities. The board's main responsibility is to establish policy. However, as the board is revising policies, it does not seem like the board is playing a significant role in the process. Let's discuss. So, basically, and this is, this is the way I say it, right? Your number one function is policy, um, the policy manual. Making sure that the district has a, well, what I call the, your law books, because that's what it is. If anybody were to sue you, the first thing the court says is, "What does your policy say? Did you follow it?" Um, and so, you do want to make sure that you have sound board policy, it's up to date, it matches the practice, because, you know, so a lot of times we find, we find that, that the practice doesn't actually ma- match the policy, and so forth. But as I stated earlier, Section B is where you live, right? So, when it comes to the other sections, and this, this was the, basically what her question was, it just did not seem like the board was driving the train when it came to instruction, when it came to personnel. But realizing, you don't know what you don't know, right? So, when the, the, um, the administration brings the instruction policies, it's because the experts in this field, and, and that field have said, "These are best practices. Hey, board, please review these, and then if you have any questions, we'll, we, we will answer them, and then, you know, you can adopt them, make changes as you see fit." But understanding that, other than Section B, you probably won't drive those policies. Um, I had a board contact me one time and said, "Tiffany, we're going to sit down over the weekend, and we're going to revise the entire policy manual." And I said, "Good luck, because you look at the policy and you say, 'Oh, it looks good to me,'" but, so how do you know if there were any legal changes? How do you know if there were any, um, uh, best, any things that need to change, be changed from state regulation? And, and anything like that, because it looks good to you, right? And so, I, that's just not a good practice. You do want somebody else to, to help with the revision of the, the policies, especially your administrative team when it comes to personnel, when it comes to instruction, when it comes to students. So, you know, don't think that it is your responsibility and you alone are going to sit down and work on those policies. That's just not realistic. Um, and basically, I included the language from your policies that do talk about your role um, as the legislative polit, policymaking, um, one of your main duties, and then also your, um, board policy process. Um, and one of the things that Chair Hammond did ask me to go over, and also I just wanted to put it out there about, you know, about the policy process. Because the way the policy is written, you know, anybody can basically, um, present a policy, propose a policy, and then you take the policy, your, your administrative team will probably take the policy, tweet, you know, look at it, and then deter, and then present it to the board. And so, I don't know specifically what you wanted me to address, um, as it pertains to the policy process, but I am here to answer whatever questions you may have.
I can, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, to get us started. Um, so, I, wha, I guess what I would like to know is what are best practices and recommendations on when, when we want to investigate an existing policy or revise an, an existing policy? And I'm just going to put it out because it's, I know it's one we're talking about. I just want to know how, what your recommendations are moving forward. But if we have policies that, that conflict with one another, or, um, when we're talking about issues of procurement and making sure that our procurement policies are in line with state procurement code and things like that, is that something that we should consult with either School Board Association or attorneys and have them draft the policies and bring them to us? Or, um, should we have conversations about that before the policies are written? Because we're talking about code, or, or, what are, does that make sense? I know we've talked about it, so I'm, I just would like clarification before we talk about it again.
So, the easy answer is that is what we do at the School Boards Association, so, yeah, that's the easy answer. Um, and yes, we, we would help with that, that process. Um, but yes, you do, as you sit down and you say, "Hey, these are the policies." Okay. First of all, every seven to 10 years, you should look at revising your entire policy manual. Okay? Um, because, think about it, students were different 10 years ago. Technology was different. The pandemic wasn't even a thing. So, you know, just like you, you, last year, I was sending out emergency policies for you to keep it under your, you know, your hat, so you, if something happens, we won't have to go down this road of, "I don't know what to do again." So, things like that, you just want to, to keep and, and, and make sure that you're updating and thinking about continually. But every seven to 10 years, and, you know, I looked at your policies, and, um, you're not too far gone, but, because we have districts whose policies still say 1988, 1998. So, I, you know, but it is something that you want, you want to do and continually do every seven to 10 years. And then, for, you know, especially, I think everybody at this point, except for two of you, are relatively new, so everything was before you. And so, you really do want to look at your policy manual and say, "Where are we on this?" And I, I can assure you, if you go through a policy, um, revision process, you will have those discussions that will help you understand the district better.
So, how does that typically work when you go through a policy revision process for your entire set of policies?
Policies.
And, and when is the last time that that was done with District Five? I mean, I, I know that most of our policies say they were issued in 2006, so, I'm, I'm just curious.
That is what I saw.
Yeah.
So, I want to say so? Um, go ahead, Dr. Milton.
Dr. Richardson, I haven't had a chance to calibrate some of this content, but, um, I appreciate your preparation, because obviously you've done your research. And, um, School Board, the so, the model policies in the School Boards Association are, um, the premise of when, when we bring recommendations to the board. And, um, during my tenure, it's been important that we go back and look at policies. Of course, the B section has not been one that we've, we've attended to as a staff. So, I would imagine if you looked at some of the policies, you're going to see more update outside of the B section than within. But this board has certainly discussed their interest with the B section, and have discussed using committees to do some review of that. But the things like the resolutions for emergency for COVID, those things have been brought forth, and any other suggestion that comes forward, the Model Policy Manual that we receive late summer every year, we review as a staff. And we see something that's applicable, we bring it forward. Dr. Richardson would probably say that we're one of the most, uh, of a nuisance of calling and asking, "Are model policies ready yet?" Um, and she's nodding her head for those that can't hear. Because as soon as we hear of some changes, we want to know when to put on our timeline to make sure that we have it properly vetted before we bring it to the board, so that we bring to you a thoughtful, um, proposal rather than one that we know that you're going to have to spend a lot of time with revisions on. Would you agree or disagree with that, Dr. Richardson?
I have no disagreement with that. I, I know the folks in Lexington, Resilient Five very well. So, um, and then you may look and, and see, and I didn't do a, a thorough evaluation, that's something that I can do, but you may look and see that, that Section B is like one of the few sections, or only section, that has not been done. So, that would be, if, if I had to recommend anything, that would be where I say, "Start." And so, if you, and, uh, some districts do just say, "We need to do one section." So, that's not a problem. But basically, if you, you contract with us, what we do is we take your current policy, we send you a draft that says, "This is what we recommend that you have." So, all the, the policies that I say, you know, I presented, the, the, that you don't have, you would see all of those. All of the updates, legal and, um, best practices, we include. Um, and then we send it back to you in draft form for you to then discuss and then adopt. And so, normally, for a section, it takes about three months. So, if you look at the entire policy manual, then that would take about 18, only because when we send you the draft, usually that first month is a, "Let's review it, go and dive into it for the administrative team as well as the board." And then the next two readings, depending on how often you have board meetings. So, if you only have one a month, twice, okay, so then you probably can do it in two months. First reading, second reading, and be done. And then I don't know how your first and second readings go. So, I, I'm just, uh, uh, guesstimating at this point. Um, so, I don't, but at a, at a max, it should take three months, just depending on how your, um, first and second reading usually land on your calendar.
And Dr. Richardson, if I may, you did that analysis for School District Five a couple of years ago, but I suspect by now, it's out of date.
Okay.
Because there have been some model policies that have passed for Section B that we would need to review. So, even though that activity's been done, the board may want to consider when it's time asking for that review to be done again in its entirety.
Okay. And so, we, we can talk about that.
Who has access to the, uh, School Board Association's group there? Because I know I've called and asked and never gotten anything back. And I was told one time that only our board chair and, uh, the superintendent am I, you know, as a school board member, am I a member of the association to where I can get, um, information on policy individually?
Did I tell you that?
No.
Oh, okay, I was about to say, because that's not, that's not what I would say. Um, no, I just had to clear the air, that's not something I would ever say. But no, it's a, um, any board member can call me and get, you know, a proposed policy, a model policy. It does not have to be the chair.
Okay. And if you're asking for legal advice, can you get that too?
Uh, so, what I'd always say with that is that I, you know, what I tell one, I tell all. Uh, so what I'd always say with that is that I, you know, what I tell one, I tell all. So yes, uh, because it's, it's no, it's no, uh, form of confidentiality because we, we do, you know, work with the, the entire board. So just be mindful that, you know, whatever legal question you ask, everybody basically gets the same answer.
Us, wow.
Yeah.
You get no answers, one thing, you know, at all.
Yeah, no. So, mm-hmm, I, it does not matter who calls me.
Um, Tiffany, um, I've noticed like a lot of the policies have legal references at the end. And if you go in South Carolina law, there's a law that talks about, um, school board trustees, legal requirements. But then there are other laws that are sprinkled kind of in there. Have, do y'all have one list of all the laws that school boards must follow?
No, because, uh, South Carolina is different in that a lot of, some of your, um.
Some of you have county boards and also.
Uh, but, uh, you have a lot of local laws that are only applicable to you? And that we keep this as a, you know, specifically for you? That means that your delegation has basically passed this. And that talks about, um, you know, how you, how many board members you have, when you are elected, so and so and so. So it's not just, it is Title 59, that is the, the big statute. But you also have your local laws. Then you also have state regulations. Then you also have federal regulations. And so the list goes on and on and on. So we don't have just one pot. It basically is a.
We could do that if we wanted to.
Yes.
Just to have one list that then ties into all these policies.
Every policy, yes. We don't have that in one, one format, no. Yes.
Um, you've answered this for me, and so has, uh, Mr. Price. But, uh, you know, just for the board, um, it is done, like, you'll have a policy, uh, and some, we might read a policy online from Fort Mill or from Greenville. And it, he said it was perfectly all right to use their language and just, you know, adapt it to us. You know, and I had some board members, you know, questioning if that was all right. But I knew that I'd gotten an answer that that was done by a lot of school boards rather than us just drafting it.
You can get language from anywhere. No need to reinvent the wheel if you do see something that works elsewhere. Um, so yeah, no, that's not a problem at all. Go ahead.
Um, in, in that same vein, that policy, I think Ms. Hammond's talking about, dealt with board committees. And we'd asked at some point, I think, um, we caught, you know, you, you'd said if somebody wants to talk to the School Board Association, call. And I did. I think Scott Price had said, you know, would, would rather do it in a full session like this. But it was about the use of board committees. And I, I served on this board long enough that I see, I saw some disastrous outcomes with board committees that usurped the superintendent's role and authority and, and were just off doing things on their own without all the relevant facts and information. And it was just a disaster. And, um, was that not going to be part of this session tonight? I mean, was that a request?
Oh, no, that wasn't, that wasn't on my list. But we can talk about it. So, so if, the, the question is, SC SBA does not recommend having standing committees. Um, we, we recommend you getting, uh, all the information at one time just because over the years, as Mr. White has said, we have seen disaster after disaster. It's, it's, it's one of those things where when everybody is good, they're good, right? Com, similar to the, the administrative rule conversation. And then, when everybody's not good, it's a, well, the committee got this information and it made a determination. And then the full board did not get that, that, that information. So it's one of those things where, you know, you have to decide as a board whether that will work for you. Um, because, you, you know, you find that when you have committees, the administration presented to the committee, they're not coming to bring that same information back to the full board. That's the whole purpose of the committee, is to, to, to say, hey, this is the information. You know, is that okay, blah, blah? And then when it gets to the full board, it's the, the committee recommends, right? So just be mindful that when you, you, you go down the road of committees, it's good when it's good. So, um, uh, a lot of dis, just, let me, one, one last statement. So, so some districts have decided to do committees of the whole. So then they have a full day of, um, you know, where the administration presents it to the committee at the, the committee, and I say committee, the whole board, as a committee of a whole. And so they'll do that like Mondays from one to six or whatever, five to seven, whatever you, you say. Um, the, the time being. And then they do that committee work so, so much so that when you get to the board meeting, everybody's got the information, everybody's asked the question, they've done the committee work. And so then you can get to the board meeting and just, you know, actually vote on the, the issues. And it's, 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 we've already had all the major discussions. So that's another option versus doing a two-person, three-person committee. Go ahead.
And, and I guess I'd, I'd, I'd ask, I was kind of hoping this was going to be on the agenda tonight. I, I assumed it was, but. There's some distinctions that I've seen. And of course, I think, um, the, the policy that was adopted, that was mirrored after Fort Mill's policy, um, only had board members as members. So that was a fatal flaw. We, we had committees where, and, and, and sort of the pattern that works is people get elected and all their political friends feed them all these ideas. And they come in here and they start implementing this stuff for then a couple of months before they even learn what they're doing on the board. And, you know, we had election in the fall. And then, you know, we all of a sudden were seeing committees, you know, being advocated. And my antenna's going up. And I recall very well how, how, how much chaos and destruction, how many staff people started leaving this district as a result of the committees. So non-board members was a flaw. But the other thing that, that we had Paul Crony, who was executive director, finally come talk to us. He came and observed what was going on and goes, I, I get it, I see it. And, and, and after he talked to us, the committees were disbanded because they were so, you know, it was just such a, but the, the two other features that were so destructive is one, committees sometimes to be, tend to be avenues for people's political friends to have their voices heard very loudly and clearly to the exclusion of the other, however many tens of thousands of people live in this. I mean, we got seventeen or eighteen thousand students and probably one and a half that time many parents. And we have other taxpayers. So, you know, the, the committees aren't really appropriate for vehicles to be heard because the majority of people aren't going to come, just like, probably participation. So, I mean, I, I witnessed that as a flaw. But the other flaw was, you know, and I, and I asked, and I'm asking you a question. What's the distinction with the board that the association would recommend as a best practice? When you would even seat a committee at all? Because what happens in these board meetings is the superintendent and their staff, they bring us information. They bring us, you know, they're, they're here to answer questions so we can get a 360-degree look at an issue or a problem. Committees aren't going to have all that information flowing up to them. And they may be making recommendations and decisions in a partial vacuum without all the information. And so my real question is, if, and I, I've been on this board, you know, probably a, a very long time. Ms. Ms. Hammond's probably been on the same length of time or close to it. And I don't see any distinction in my mind necessarily what cannot be done in a full board meeting with the superintendent present and her staff focusing information for us to make decisions. But where, where would you see, or where would the, the association see, okay, this is a distinction would be appropriate time or place to have a quote, "board committee," go off and try to, you know, fathom something to come back and make a recommendation to the board?
So our recommendation is that you not have committees. So I, um, because our, our stance has been that, you know, the, the board should, everybody should receive the same information at the same time. That, that is just our stance. So, um, and I, I do suggest that if you're going to take the committee approach just to say, you know, can we step outside of the board meeting to delve into the issues? I still say you should do it as a committee of a whole and it still be the entire board. I'm not going to recommend that you have smaller committees. Yeah, and so, yeah, again, it's that Dr. Crony. You know, it's just SC SBA, SC SBA stance because we see where it has gone wrong. So, um, but if you do, and like Rock Hill or York, whomever you looked at, you know, if you do see a, um, a district who has committees and it, it works, then, you know, it might be best to actually talk to them about that and not just look at their policy. Um, only to, to, you know, and to, to figure out why it's working. Um, I, I just can't suggest that because I don't, we don't recommend that.
I just, as clarification, because I think, uh, Trustee White made a statement that's not true. Our policy does only include board members for, for committees. We don't have other members on our committees.
That's what I said. I said the policy that was passed, but, but.
Does not have. You made it sound like it did have. We, our, our committees do not have other members besides board members on them.
No, no, I, I, I said it correctly. I said what our policy said.
You says, you say that our policy says.
I said this policy did. I said, but the flaw was the policies we had did not have.
In the previous. So we're trying to overcome the flaws of the past. Okay.
But, 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 that was just a, a flaw in the way it was structured. The way they operate is still a major concern. And, and I've, and I've lived it and I've seen it. But I think the first meeting when y'all brought the policies, and I think you were one of the authors of the policy or were modeling after other policies. And, but when you brought them, I had raised a question about non-board. And I've seen at least one member of this board saying, telling the public, y'all can be a part of this. You know, y'all can come and, and, and you can be engaged in that. And that goes back to, there's, you know, seventy-something thousand people here. You're never going to see more than a couple dozen people being interested in an issue at any point in time. And you're not, you're not making a decision for the whole when you're, when you're, when it becomes a vehicle for political friends to have a loud stage. Because then it becomes, oh, well, gosh, this is what everybody's telling us. Well, yeah, that's what those forty people are telling you. But there's about, you know, sixty-nine thousand plus more that aren't even communicating with you. And it's really, but, but I did state it correctly because it was put in and y'all did respond to that. But the concerns are broader than are there just, are you allowing non-board members? It's, 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 it's the, the fundamental question. I think I've already gotten your answer. In fact, when I called Scott Price and talked to him, he said, we don't want to talk to y'all singly. We want to talk to you as a whole, which was, I thought we were all coming here to, to hear that. But, but I think the, the reality is, in my mind, the question is, why can't it be discussed in a full meeting? And why can't we have all the resources of the district staff here to answer any nuance of any question that, that, you know, that pops up? And that, but I think you may, you, you, you gave your position and that was clear.
And the reality is, a lot of school districts in our state have committees. I mean, if you look at, online at least, if you look at their board policies, um.
I can tell you the exact number. We, we, we have kept up with that specifically. So I can, I can send you a list of, we have a chart.
Okay.
So I can send that to you.
But that ship has sailed. We've got a policy now, but I think you have a great idea. We should talk to the people at Fort Mill and maybe some other places about what they do and why it works. And I don't think the purpose, I mean, we can have a, a, a understanding that all of the information flows back to the board. I don't think that was ever a reason not to. But the reality is, things like, we have redistricting coming. That's, takes a lot of work. And even in the meetings that we had, you don't get a not, there's not enough time when you meet twice a month to ask the kind of information you have to on redistricting from the consultants and run this model, change that model. Tell me how many students are here? You just, there's not enough time. We will never get this, this, in my opinion, we'll never get redistricted. That's, this is just one example, if we can't move faster than twice a month.
So here's my follow-up with you, just to play devil's advocate. Who's getting all that information? And how are the people who are not on the committee not getting that information supposed to?
Well, I mean, I would bring all the information back. I think it's the questions. When you're in twice a month and you've got all these other things on the agenda, you don't have enough time to ask questions. Not in seven people times two questions each, now you're at fourteen questions. And maybe you, as a board member, have five questions. You know, it's just, I know when we did the redistricting, I felt like I didn't have enough chance to ask questions, just that one topic. Because I didn't want to monopolize a whole meeting just to talk about redistricting. So I just throw that out there as an example.
And I would like, I would like to clarify for sure. I did expect this to be brought up, Mr. White. And it was important to me for it to be discussed. And I didn't put it, when I put policy and changing policy and creating policy, that was a place, that was a place for anybody to bring up a specific question. So I'm glad that this was brought up. And I do, I, I'd like to follow up though with the answer, since y'all don't. You see the pitfalls of it. But I also see the merits. And, and I think the idea of talking to, to districts that do it. But I was under the impression if we had these, the committee, again, it's not people out in the public, but it'd be the committees of the whole. And that any board member that would even want to, even if they're not appointed on that committee, they could, my understanding for, and I think it, it may be Greenville, I may be saying the wrong one, that they do that. But it's, it's open to any board member that would like to come. And then anything that's brought up and answered, it would come back to the whole board. It would just, and it's funny, maybe he, I mean, I also talked to Mr. Price. And he said, Jan, there are districts that have them. And they work well.
No doubt about that.
And, and there's some that have gone awry.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I don't think we need to just look at the past and decide that we, as a new board, cannot do this right or at least explore how to do it best. And so I, I don't want to just, you know, slam down that it, it can't be done correctly. But I do agree, there are pitfalls in it. I understand Mr. White's point. But I also understand, you know, points made by other school districts and some people on this board.
So, both Charleston and Greenville have committees of the whole. Now, that is whole.
That's what I would like, yeah.
So it's, it's not just a couple people. Um, I, I think maybe the policy that you do have from Rock Hill, theirs may actually be standing committees. And so it's.
No.
It's a committee of the whole?
It's, it's no standing committees of the board.
Special purpose, okay, okay. So that's basically, yeah. So that's basically, I think, the standard language is no standing committee. So what you're saying is you have special appointed committees when something arises. Okay.
So, that's the question.
So the, and, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And so the committee falls, goes out the door when the objective has been completed. Okay.
So that was my, just piggybacking off of what you're saying about the committee of the whole because really I hadn't really thought of it that way until right now. So I'm really, this is very helpful. So what you're saying is, and, and Jan, please, uh, kind of correct me with some of those statements that you just made. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page. So when we appoint a special committee, like a redistricting committee, all seven members of this board can be on that committee. So if there is a committee meeting every Tuesday at four o'clock, we can all participate and ask questions. And if we can't because we have work or kids or whatever, crazy life like mine. But, but that we can participate should we want to. It's not just cherry pick board members that go and then report at the end. Is that right? I just want to make sure I understand the policy right and that that is what you are saying a committee of the whole would be.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So yes.
That's how, uh, that's how, uh.
And so that would have to be noticed like a normal board meeting because we're in a quorum and it would be like what we're doing right now?
No. So a committee meeting has to be noticed no matter how many people are on it.
Okay, I guess I mean live screen. I'm talking about videotaped, yes, yes. Okay, okay, gotcha.
Right, no, as long as you open it to the public.
Okay, yep.
And then you're, you're perfectly fine.
Okay.
It's so, but yes, they do, the, your committees, whether whole, part, full, whatever, they, they're, it's everything for you compliant.
I definitely think when we were having that discussion, when we, when these policies were going through, that wasn't necessarily clear. So I'm glad that we kind of have cleared that up.
There's a couple of things that were said that I think are misleading. And first is that I think we'd be able to delve further into, to the, to the items and get into the real specifics of it that we don't have time to in these board meetings. The second thing is that the notion that we wouldn't take advantage of our administrative staff in asking questions and of the School Board Association and others like the State Attorney General's Office or whatever, that, that if we had to ask questions, that I think that's a misnomer and I think that needs to be cleared up. I think we would end up having a much better overall rounded policy booklet and all that kind of thing and specifics with, with this, because we don't, we don't get a chance to get into this at, at two meetings a month. I mean, there's just no way to do that. And I think, you know, I, I want to reiterate what Ms. Huddle said. I mean, it, it just, you know, to get into the depth of it, you've got some very intelligent people on this board and I think that they would, that's what the public elected them to do. And I don't think that just saying that no polit, no, not having committee, committees fits this board. And, and that's, you know, that's just not, not what I believe in and I think other members, we've already voted on it. We're going to have committees and now we need to make them work. So that's the issue.
So I definitely recommend, as Chair Hammond said, if you, if you're going to have them, to have them as a whole. So instead of just a few board members, so then it just gives you another opportunity to have a work session and dive into those issues and to get all the questions answered. And then your board meeting should not run as long. So yes, I, I, I can totally support and the, the idea of committee as a whole. That, that is, that is right up my alley.
And if we need to, you know, revisit our language in that, you know, we can. But that, that was our goal. That was our goal. And, and, and I, I do, I really truly see pitfalls that, that you were feeling where you feel like a couple of people. And, and I, I will agree. And I was on the board in the past when we did that. And it, it, when you do cherry pick committee members that are from the public, you know, it did cause a lot of discord. I agree with that.
Sounds good.
But we're a new board, Dr. Richardson, and this is a really good board.
Right. And, and no doubt about it. And the, and the, the issues that we're talking about will, will help. So, you know, this is good to have these type of discussions when you have a, a relatively new board. And so that you can, you know, I don't want to say, um, mesh together and then get all the concerns out on the table and then move forward together, knowing that, okay, now we're on the same page as to what the committees will be. So I, I think this is a good discussion.
Yeah, that, and, and I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to put about that one committee that, I assume that was definitely what, when I asked you about the policies, that was a big deal. Because, and that was one of the big questions that I knew some board members had some concerns about. So, you know, that was, I knew that would be brought up in question and answered. So I'm, I'm so glad that we had the time to discuss it.
And that's basically what she did tell me, that, that, you know, not necessarily things from the list, but, you know, other things would come up. And so the only last thing I have is this scenario. And then we can, I can open it up for more, more questions. Board Member Rocky Balboa was once a guidance counselor in the Apollo Creed School District. He accepted a position in a neighboring district when he was not selected as a Director of Counseling Services. Now that Board Member Rocky Balboa is on the Apollo Creed School District Board, he is determined to question every decision of the superintendent and he is disrespectful to the, to the Director of Counseling. Why is this problematic?
Well, disrespectful is always problematic to me.
Always problematic. So be mindful, you know, board members, you know, that staff, you know, um, are people. I don't know how else to say that. So, you know, just, just be mindful of, you know, when they come up to present that everybody is, is, is treated, you know, in a, in a respectful and, and dignified manner. Because you don't want, right now, in the, in the past couple of years or so, advanced ed, one of the, the, the categories is governance. And I, I don't know if you all know, because, you know, relatively new, but there was a district upstate that almost lost accreditation because of board behavior. Because that is a category now for accreditation. And so, you know, delegation had to whip up and, and, and appoint a new board. It, it just got really ugly really fast, because when, when advanced ed went in and they talked to staff, staff said, "Oh, no, we do, we have a book," you know, to share about that, things that are happening. So just be mindful that you, you know, you just want to, you treat staff as kindly as possible, because they are coming to you and, you know, as employees. And, and, and so, um, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say. And then just remember that your policy says, you know, you're always supposed to think of terms of children first. It's not about, you know, your individual, um, conflicts of interest. And then you're presenting personal, personal, I'm sorry, presenting personal criticisms of any employee directly to the superintendent. And then I would consider adding vote enacted partially for the good of the district. And so any other questions that you, you know, you have, feel free to ask them now.
Yes, I told her question and answer, so there's her pretty question. Her visuals are great. Anybody, Mr. Hogan, you've been so quiet. I know you have, have one.
Uh, yeah, I guess I can pull one out. First of all, thank you very much for coming out. It's very enlightening. Given a scenario, let's say that we have a policy in place, that that policy is superseded by a Department of Education policy. All right? When the Department of, or if the Department of Education changes the language in their policy, does our policy become intact or would we have to amend our policy as well?
You have to amend your policy as well. So basically, what would happen is yours would be out of,
Okay.
um, out of sync. And, but if somebody were to, something were to happen court case wise, anything wise, it would be a, this is what your policy says. And so, you, you know, the employee who followed your, your, your policy despite it being incorrect would be in line.
Okay.
So you just want to make sure that, you know, we, we try our best to, to send you updates and according to what changes in regulation and all that jazz. So you do want to update those as it happens, because it is, it is, you know, required.
So if a regulation would be in place by the Department of Education, and let's say they lacks that regulation, but our policy says that A, B, C, X, Y, Z, right? Similar to the Department of Education, would our policy, our policy would step in and be the letter of law for us until we made amendments or changes?
Right, right. So your, your employees will be following your policy.
Okay.
Anybody else with any questions? Ms. Gardner?
I guess I've been thinking a little bit about the committee of the whole. Do you think that that would be a, a problem? Because right now our meetings are, and even our workshops are live streamed and we do a good job of doing all the things that we need to do. And if we decided to do a committee of the whole, say we picked a policy, B, E, D, H, and decided to have a committee meeting on that, and then we hashed it out for six hours and we put together all of our stuff and we asked the right questions, and then we went into the board meeting and just said, "This is the, this is what we're gonna do." Do you see that as a conflict of, I don't want to call it FOIA, but do you see that wouldn't be quite as open as doing all of that in the open?
It would, I, I, I don't, because I, I see it, it would be open. You can't have a closed, yeah. So technically it would be open, just like today. Um, and, and your, your members of the public could attend. And so, you know, I don't know whether you've always videotaped, but I always say, you know, your work sessions are your work sessions. And those who can, can come and first come, first served basis will be there. So no, because when you turn around, you can't make any decisions unless you're at the board meeting. So just think of your committee as a whole as a work session. So you're going to be presenting that information at the full board meeting anyway.
Okay, so that, you don't see that being a problem? Okay.
And so you still have to do your two readings on the policy. That, that's the other big deal. You know, especially if you're having a work session on policies. You know, you hash out the, the inner workings of what we want. And then, you know, you present that policy to the public with the changes.
Right.
Twice. So everybody will be on the same page about the work that was done.
Kathy, if, if the AR policy, it conflicts with the actual policy, would the actual policy take precedence until we can fix the AR?
So I would say, um, I would, the problem with saying that is that nobody will know that, you know? So if I'm reading the, if I read the rule with that and I say, "Oh, I found my answer," you can't just say, "But the policy says something different." Do, do you see what I'm saying? So I, I-
Should our focus be, you know, if we haven't revised these policies, the B policies since 2006, instead of going through, starting with them from A to Z, should we fix those inconsistencies first?
I would do that first.
Okay.
I would do that first, because it's, it's, it's one thing to say we need to, to update them all. It's another thing to say they're conflicting. And so we, solve that issue first. Yes. Yeah. Even if you say, "Let's pull those rules." And, and, and so then, you know, I don't, I don't know how you've done it in the past. If you, if the board approves the rules, then, you know, you do need to suspend the rules through the board process. And that's just a majority vote. But, yeah, so I would, I would pull them if it's, if it's really a conflict, so that they're still not both out there.
So can you, if you, if you want to fix a conflict, can you, do you still have to have two readings? Or can you suspend the rules to just do one reading to do that?
So to, to delete a policy or to suspend a policy is just a majority vote.
Okay.
But to fix it, like if we wanted to change it, it would still take two?
To change a policy or update is a two reading process.
Kathy, were you finished with that? In piggybacking that, um, and maybe I shouldn't take our time, but it goes to the same point you just made. We found out that we need to, our strategic plan, Dr. Milton, you helped me on this. We were at the five year, well, COVID gave us another year, but that, that, that's in the works. But we did find out that we needed to let the board approve that plan before it has to be submitted. This is by law, like the twenty-sixth, or no, twenty-thirtieth of April. So we need to put that on there. Can we vote that? Can we, would that be suspending the two readings of that, just to approve it by the board at our next meeting? I, I just didn't know that and it popped up in-
To approve the strategic plan?
Yes, because it said, see, I caught, remember, I, you gave me that question.
Right, but I, the, the strategic plan is not a policy.
No, but it said we had, it had to have board approval, so it should be on, in our minutes. That's what you said.
Right, but it only requires one reading, I guess is what I'm saying.
One reading, okay. That's all. So I just, we just, that'll just be under her-
On that final board, yeah. On the, you have another one this month? Yes, that, that will be perfectly fine. Yeah.
Got you. We can do that with one reading. That was my question. Thank you.
I'll just put, yeah, one minute after. I'll quit.
I'm good, I'm good. I'm good.
It has been, I don't know why, but the, our district has had a, a, we've always had a policy whereby we had board officers in the board officer meeting, the board officers were elected by the, by the board in total. And we have a board officers meeting, which is, you know, has three officers and the superintendent is at the meeting. And prior to this, it's always been, I mean, as long as I know about it, that's always been the situation. And those meetings are not open to FOIA, because it's, it's not a, it's not a quorum. Okay, and we discuss things in there that have to do with, of course, vetting some things to see whether they should go on the agenda. And some of those things have to, of course, have to do with personnel or would have to do with, you know, an issue that might be student related. But we don't get into the details of it. All we do is, is say, "Yes, that should go on the agenda and a place for it." But those are things that you, if you, if you couldn't possibly put all those things, you know, in public out there before, you know, before any knowledge was, because that might, that might hurt somebody. I mean, you know, taint them, you know? And so, anyway, the, the, some of the, one of the members of this board came up and said that those meetings have to be, you know, done, open with camera and so forth, which they never have been.
So according to your policy,
That's right.
Which is the agenda policy, it, it specifically says that the board and the board chair, superintendent and the officers, and I may be paraphrasing, I'm sorry, will develop the agenda.
Right.
So if the purpose of that discussion, that I don't want to call it a meeting, you know, is to develop the agenda per policy, then you're okay?
That's solely what we, what it's for. And that's solely what happens. But, but, but the, they were, were, um, you know, it, it was a voted on situation. But we had one member who was just adamant that that wasn't, you know, that that, that what, what that was was a committee, which it is not, okay? And so it's, it sets the agenda. And I wanted to state that in public, just because I wanted to make sure that, you know, per our policy, that we're following it.
If, if the purpose of that discussion is to determine what should go on the agenda, then you are in line with your policy.
And that's what it is. It's solely for that, so.
And to add to that, I got legal counsel after that was brought up by a board member, because I wanted to be sure, as a new chair, I do want to always be following the legality of anything we do. And it was legal counsel Andrea White, who deals totally with school boards. And she said that, that it was certainly, same thing you're saying. It's not, it's not a meeting that has to be, should be FOIA'd or should be, you know, have, let, allow public to come to that meeting. So I felt like, you know, I, I did check on the legality of that, because the person that brought it up did talk about that Attorney General had made a ruling on that three people would be a meeting. But like I said, we're just setting the agenda. And I know that's been done the sixteen years I've been on the board. It's been held like that. So I just want, we just want to be sure we're doing everything right, as I, as I told Dr. Richardson.
And Ms. Hammond, if I may build upon that, though, idea of doing everything right, we as a staff are trying to do that as well. And Dr. Richardson, I appreciate your collaboration with us, because after some questions regarding how we have done strategic plan on an annual basis throughout my tenure in School District Five, prior to being superintendent, we've been consistent. And we certainly have had extended conversations with you, as well as representatives from the State Department of Education. And correct me if I'm wrong, but based upon what I wrote to the board last week and their weekly message from me, it is the will of the board for the local involvement, but how we've been doing it has been compliant. It's, so we're going to be consistent for next Monday night's meeting. But if this board chooses to get involved differently, and this, of course, as you remember, is our reporting rather than our creation. So we're in the creation development, of which we're not ready to take action. But because strategic plan is such emphasis right now in School District Five, because of the COVID delay, we certainly are behind schedule, as are other districts that were in the same cycle as us. So anything you'd like to add or, for details for record?
So I have not specifically looked at the details behind the, the, the strategic plan. What Chair Hammond brought to me was specifically, could she sign off on it just as the board chair? And so my response when reading the statute, it specifically says, "The board." And that was the, the response that I gave as to, you need to vote on it. You know, because I can't recommend that she just put her signature on it on behalf of the board. That's not what the statute says. Now, as far as the information and what comes to the board at the next board meeting, regarding the underlying factors, I have not delved into the specifics of who and does what. If I had to take a guess, it would be a, it just depends on, you know, what the board and the, the administration elects to do and what that process looks like. But if you want me to, I can read the specifics and then, you know, follow up.
I will defer to the board. I think that the officers are able to have phrasing of satisfaction for the preparation, what we've drafted thus far. I'm not sure if that's been shared with the rest of the board, but we are on schedule and hopefully, as we move forward, we can definitely make sure we're always in compliance. But anything that we need to do to tweak or to vet, we certainly are open to that.
I have a follow-up question on that. I don't know what all you're asked to sign. But what types of things would a board chair be asked to sign where the board had not also seen what the board chair is signing? Are they, is she representing us when she signs stuff?
So in, in, I don't have an easy answer for that. Chair Hammond, is there something that you usually sign? I don't.
You know, of my short, what, no, my five or six, we're in the sixth month. I know that Ms. Strange had to call me one day. It was something we had voted on, but it did, I had to come by here and she, what was it? Right, I was, yes, we sent a letter and it had to be signed by me, because we had voted as a board. So, and then the only thing was this, then this came up, that I needed to sign this before April 30th to make it the legal document.
It sounds to me like most of the things that she would sign is something that y'all would have voted on first.
Yeah, they would know about it.
So I can say that, you know, if there has to be a John Hancock on the actual document, that, you know, you probably would take action first. I just can't come up with a scenario, based off just our discussions just now, that that wouldn't happen first.
Any other questions? We'll let her get some dinner. Dr. Richardson, I really appreciate your coming. I know you're a busy lady. She is a rock star, Dr., you know, they call her that at the School Board Association.
Oh, so sweet.
Yeah, they do, they do. I'm going to give you an advertisement. But we do appreciate, and the board, I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of you. I'm so happy and proud. Everybody made it. I hope that the way we left it at the end for any questions, that if I didn't put a subject down that you would like to have talked about. But Dr. Richardson asked me to pick some from the many she could cover. And I tried to pick things people had talked to me about or asked me. But that's why I asked her to leave question time, because I could have easily left something out you wanted. So I will, with that, and there's no other questions or comments. And Dr. Milton, we want to thank you and your staff for staying till seven o'clock. Thank you so much. I know this is in your dinner hour with kids or whatever. But there were a few board members this accommodated really well, because they have the same thing going on. So I just appreciate a board that works together like this. And you're all awesome and I'm honored to be your chair. Meeting adjourned.